Brian County Board of Commissioners meeting, February 13th. To order please. We'll stand. Commissioner Covington is going to give us our indication and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we just want to give you thanks for this day, Lord, and for the many blessings that you've given us. We want to thank you for safe travel and ask for safe travel for all those after the meeting, Lord. We ask that you carry this meeting and that you hold us that we might make great decisions for Brian County. For us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If you'd join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to welcome everybody tonight. Thanks for coming out. Have any elected officials here tonight? Nope. We need our approval of our agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second. Any changes?
With the addition of...
Executive session.
Executive session and three items under the county administrators.
Executive session is for real estate litigation.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Say it again. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All of those, all right, that most good, thank you. All right, we need the approval of our January 2024 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the January 2024 minutes.
Second. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. We have our approval, our consent agenda. She's all been over.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have no public hearing, so we'll go to our community development non-public hearing items. First up is Drayton Parker Companies' first reading of ordinance to amend zoning map for 4.91 acres, parcel 057-092. Chair?
I'm just waiting for him to get...
Okay.
Okay. So this is the first reading for an ordinance to amend the zoning map for a parcel on Belfast River Road, and you can see it highlighted there. This is for Drayton Parker Companies, and the property is currently zoned A5 agricultural, and they are requesting to rezone to B2 general commercial in order to build a convenience store with fuel pumps. This is the first reading only. The item is scheduled for the first public hearing with planning and zoning on February 20th, and we'll be back with you all for the second reading on March 12th. And I can answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions for that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Race Track First Read of Ordinance to Amend a Zoning Map for five acres, parcel 029061, and five acres 029-016.
This is another first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property located on U.S. Highway 280. Race Track Incorporated is requesting to rezone a total of 10 acres. One is currently zoned B2, one is currently zoned A5, and they're requesting both of them go to CI interchange commercial. And this shows you the location of it up here at Highway 280 and Interstate Center Boulevard. And this shows you the current zoning of both of them. Again, this is a first reading only, so it's scheduled to go to the planning and zoning for the first public hearing on February 20th, and will be back before the commission on March the 12th. And this is their concept plan that they have proposed. Have any questions on this one?
Anybody have any questions on that? So pre-agenda, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our second read of an ordinance to amend the code of Brian County, Chapter 4, Brian County Alcohol Ordinance. We will hear this and vote on this one.
Good evening. Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend our alcohol ordinance. This is an action item, so I will need a vote on this. This ordinance amendment will remove the requirement for the alcohol sales permit, which is also called the bar card. Staff is recommending that that requirement be removed, and there are also, there's also an amendment to change when the credit for the initial license for the tax or for the fee on that one. Right now, it's currently May 1. We are recommending that you change it to July 1, and at July 1 for initial, initial license, they would get the reduction to 50% of that first year's fee.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? So we'll take a motion to approve that. That is on our...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of Brian County, Georgia, Chapter 4, Brian County Alcohol Ordinance.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, because that motion carries. And that's just getting us up to state with state standards, kind of following what the state's doing. All right, next up is our first reading for an ordinance to amend the code of Brian County, Georgia, Chapter 105 Flood Damage Prevention.
So this is the first reading of that ordinance. We are bringing forward some amendments to our flood damage prevention ordinance. These are coming about due to some changes with the National Flood Insurance Program, Community Rating System, which the county does participate in. And so with their new class prerequisites, we need to do some minor updates in order to be in conformance with that, so that we can maintain our current standing with that program. So this is the first reading. We will bring it back to you next month for that second reading, and at that time, we will require some action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions on that one?
Nope.
All right, Ben, you're up.
First item is the 2023 North Brian Water and Sewer Master Plan Report. Of course, this area is set for unprecedented growth due to Hyundai site and the associated development that will follow with the opening of the plant. In effect, to determine the necessary water and sewer improvements, we conducted a study required to serve what were projected as potential future development. Thomas and Hunt and our engineers were authorized to fear this report and this master plan for that area with some established boundaries, and they've completed that, and you're basically adopting this into your, your record tonight. So our recommendation is to adopt the North Brian Water and Sewer Master Plan Report.
Okay, we need a motion on that, North Brian Water Sewer Study?
I make a motion to adopt the North Brian Water and Sewer Master Plan Report as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries, thank you. Okay, intergovernmental agreement, the City of Pembroke for property transfer.
Yeah, item two is a consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Pembroke for the donation of land for the Brian County Senior Citizen Center in the northern part of the county and the return of the Bacon Street Building, which is located in downtown City of Pembroke. This city council has considered this last night, this is part of our CDBG grant, and this is the land associated for where that building is going to be built. So our recommendation is approval, intergovernmental agreement to accept the donated parcels and transfer at the appropriate time, 24 West Bacon Street Building.
Need a motion on that one, y'all?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement to accept the donated parcels and transfer of 24 West Bacon Street Building.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, all right. Three, there, reuse water program plan and implementation consideration?
Yeah, item three, EPD has adopted a coastal Georgia water and wastewater permitting plan for managing saltwater intrusion. Brian County is located within that 24-county region covered by this plan. The plan's focus is to stabilize or halt the intrusion of saltwater into the upper Floridian Aquifer. The plan, one method of limiting such saltwater intrusion is for the county to implement a reuse water program. This resolution confirms our commitment, Brian County's commitment, to this program and authorizes county staff to create the plan for the implementation of the reclaimed water facilities and assessment of reuse fees in lieu thereof.
Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the planning and implementation of a reuse water program.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries, all right. Next up is consideration and resolution to find expectation for developers in Brian County in the area of Old Collier Road and surrounding properties.
Kyler Road.
Kyler, can't say Collier. Kyler, excuse me.
Yeah, as you know, Brian County has experienced significant growth, and of course, interest for development in that area of the county. It's necessary and in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare to take appropriate measures available by law to ensure the reasonable construction and maintenance of county roads and other public utilities. What this resolution does, it identifies those expectations from developers and puts them on notice that the county has required and continue to require contributions for those developers for road improvements and other public utilities within the county as available by law. We did something similar with Belfast Corridor down here in the south.
Okay. Need a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution identifying expectation from developers in Brian County.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, next up is the USA 80 Regional Force Main Project, McClendon, Change Order Number Three.
Item five is the USA 80 Regional Force Main Project Change Order for McClendon. That's the number three, to accommodate the following increase in the project costs, which primarily consists of additional clearing for future, to minimize heavy equipment, possibly damage utility lines in the area, and also clearing cost increases for the remaining areas within that project scope for this portion of the project. Engineers are recommending that you approve the change order, allow the reconfiguration of their proposed pump station layout for an increase in the contract price in the amount of $99,500.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a change order number three in the amount of $99,500, allowing the reconfiguration of the proposed pump station layout.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you, that carries, all right. Next is the Brian County Water Conservation Plan.
Yeah, in the continued spirit of water conservation, this is item six, Brian County Water Conservation Plan Consideration. Water slops in coastal Georgia have become limited in recent years due to, of course, the upper Floridian Aquifer, which is a vast underground reservoir of water that's been the primary source of drinking water for the coastal area for over 100 years. Therefore, in accordance with the requirements of the Georgia DNR, EPD, their rules and regulations for water quality control, this water conservation plan that we're required to prepare in an effort to ensure the future availability of usable water in Brian County. So this plan discusses that, among other topics, system and source management, water uses, long range, and drought contingency planning. So this is a thing that you'll see updated over the years as the requirements increase, and our recommendation is to adopt the Brian County Water Conservation Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Brian County Water Conservation Plan as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, carries, all right. Up next is the consideration, the award of the Brian Fisherman's Co-op Boat Ramp Project.
In October of 2022, Brian County secured funding in the amount of $3 million for Georgia DNR in the form of the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Trust Fund Program Grant. We've engineered this project, and the project bids came back with a couple of self-performance items that County Public Works did to cut the costs down significantly. Our recommendation is you consider the approval of the budget amendment, the attached budget amendment, and the award of the Brian County Fisherman's Co-op Boat Ramp Improvements Phase One to the Industrial Company, TIC, in the amount of $5,950,542, and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a few comments?
Just a good motion first, and then we'll make a comment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget amendment and award of the Brian County Fisherman's Co-op Boat Ramp Improvements Phase One to the Industrial Company in the amount of $5,950,542, and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents to initiate the project.
Okay, now we get a second.
Second.
Second, all right now, yes, already.
Yeah, just, just comment for the record, just want to commend staff for their ability to, to help mitigate those costs. The initial bids came back out of scope for what we were prepared to spend, and because of our talented public works crew, we're able to get this project done. So just want to commend them for, for that and making this possible.
Yep. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Agree.
Yep. All right, any other comments? Okay, y'all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries, thank you. All right, we have item number eight is our legacy I-16, change order number five.
Item number eight is the I-16 Regional Water and Sewer Improvements Change Order Number Five for Contractor Legacy Water Group. Due to delays in obtaining easements and also a little bit of scope change from open cut to bore within, within one of these project areas necessitates the, the need for wetland madding, and this contract, this change order reflects that, which is the majority of the cost here. The other cost is an insurance increase due to kind of the lengthening of the project as far as time. Our recommendation is approve change order number five, allow the extension of the builder's risk insurance coverage and the rental of wetland maps for an increase in the contract price in the amount of $503,439.
Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve change order number five in the amount of $503,439, allowing the extension of the builder's risk insurance coverage and the rental of the wetland maps.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Because that motion carries, thank you. Next, we have some property acquisition considerations. I won't read everyone, I'll let Ben do that. Ben? Item number nine.
Yeah, item nine, and Gage can, our replacement attorney for the night, can chime in any time he wants to as well. Item nine is a consideration of property acquisition. This is for the Langston Track, and you can, you've got the information in form, in front of you. This is a, this is a negotiated settlement for that right-of-way acquisition or easement acquisition. Appraisal was performed, resulting in fair market value with the assessment of $6,000 for the acquired easement in the property, and our recommendation is for this item to be approved as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution and presented documents to move forward with the water and sewer project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Because that motion carries, all right, we're down to item number 10.
Item number 10 is the same project, our water and sewer project. The property is located at Highway 80, Elabel, Georgia. This is water and sewer access for perpetual easement. Appraisal was performed, resulting in fair market value assessment of $10,000 for the acquired easement. This is the Olaf property. So our recommendation is to approve the item as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution and present a documents to move forward with the water and sewer project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Because that motion carries, thank you. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is in reference to the same project. This piece of property is the Henna property located along Highway 80. This easement for water and sewer access is, has been appraised, and it resulted in a fair market value assist of about $29,000 for the required easement for the project. So our recommendation is for this item to be approved as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution and presented documents to move forward with the water and sewer project.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we get a second on that. All right. Next item up, item number 12.
Item 12 is the last partial, consideration of property requirement for the Godwin Track. This property too is located along Highway 80. This easement, of course, is for that water and sewer project, is ARPA-funded, grant-funded by the state for easement, and appraisal was performed, resulted in fair market value assessment of $125,000, and our recommendation is for this item to be approved as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution and presented documents to move forward with the water and sewer project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, all right, we got some added items here.
Yeah, the item, added items is number, item 13, consideration appointment to the Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority with Anna Shafin's move to CETA that created a vacancy in that seat. The Development Authority of Brian County has recommended that you appoint the chairman of that board, John Seagraves, to the Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority Board to fulfill the existing vacated term by Anna Shafin, which will expire December 31st, 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint John Seagraves to the Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority Board to fulfill an existing term, which will expire on December 31st, 2026.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries, all right. Item number 14.
Item number 14 is the consideration of reapportment to another board, the Greater Savannah Regional Alliance Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority Board. This has, this is considering the reapportment of Ralph Forbes to the Greater Savannah Regional Alliance, the MC UDA Board, for a term which will last until June 30th, 2026. The Development Authority has, has offered his name as a possible, which he's already served on the board for a number of years, but said, recommended that he is reappointed this position.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Ralph Forbes to the Greater Savannah Regional Alliance MC UDA Board for a four-year term, which will expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you. Item number 15.
Item 15 is the consideration of appointment to the Greater Savannah Regional Alliance or the Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority Board, and this is consideration of the appointment of Andrew Johnson to that board with a term which will expire on June 30th, 2025. This too is to fulfill an existing vacated term.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Andrew Johnson to the Greater Savannah Regional Alliance MC UDA Board to fulfill an existing term, which will expire on June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. We're down to our public comments. I don't know if anybody has any public comments yet. All right, what we'll do, we'll ask Thomas Burns to come up. If you want to come up, sir, and state your name, we'll give you three minutes to talk.
My name is Thomas Burns. I'm a semi-retired grandfather of five, living proudly and gratefully in Brian County since 1995. I appreciate you all for having whatever it is it takes to be willing to run and serve on the Brian County Commission.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I also understand the lack of motivation of any elected official to even think of questioning the integrity of our voting system that got them elected. However, a recent survey shows 61% of registered voters in Georgia don't trust the voting machines. I'm a third-generation military veteran, and like many, that's how I ended up in Brian County. Spent 34 years with the Army, active-duty reserve, contractor, and civil service. My personal information is already in China since the OPM breach of 2015. Okay? In the last two years, major local medical institutions have had their electronic records hacked and held for ransom. Those institutions and their patients are still dealing with repercussions of that electronic insecurity. Not long ago, a federal district judge in Atlanta judged that our ballots that we used in November don't meet election law in Georgia because of the QR codes and the barcodes, because no human, at least none that I have ever met, could read either one of those, and that's the requirement. Those barcodes are on the ballot before the vote is taken. This creates some sort of an electronic curtain that we cannot see through on the ballot counting process, and that's, that's a problem. This is, this is why people don't have trust in the process. 61% is a pretty big deal. I'm here today, I've been in touch with a group of people that collected over 200 signatures at the Greater Gucci Seafood Festival, and the significance of that, that represents each of those signatures, probably represents 10, as many as 100 additional voters with similar opinions about the paper ballots, the need to have hand-counted paper ballots. Now that, the process of making that happen doesn't seem to be available to the people in Atlanta to make that happen. The references with this, there's a reference in this paper that I'd like to give you when I'm finished, that shows a training video that shows how simple and accurate making that process happen. It requires teams of four people, one Democrat, one Republican presumably, each of them looking at the same ballot, agreeing what it says, two tally people, and then checking the tally at the end of the batch to make sure the tallies are the same. It's not that difficult, it's much less expensive than the machines. Recently, there's been several countries, some of the poorer and less developed than the US and the state of Georgia, that have hand-counted paper ballots and had results within hours of the polls closing.
All right, thank you, sir.
I would like to give each of you a written copy of my comments, and the references and the links are on the box in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All right, next up is Pam Van Ousting.
Thank you, sir.
Come up and state your name, and we'll give you... Come up and state your name and we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I'm Pamela Van Alstine, and I want to thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. And I am here to speak about the US District Court Judge Amy Totenberg and her case, Curling versus Raffensperger, that just happened in January. On Friday, in fact, on Friday, January 19th, Jay Alex Halderman, who we've mentioned several times, he's an IT professor at Michigan, and he's traveled worldwide as well as US-wide. He hacked into a Dominion voting machine. The machine was actually borrowed from Fulton County, was a legit machine. And he showed how easy it was in front of the judge and everybody in the courtroom to put a pin in the on-off switch in the back. No seals were broken. Nobody would ever know you did this. Put it in the back and he borrowed actually the pin from the defense attorney just so that it looked completely legitimate. And by simply inserting the pin into the on-off switch, he was able to get into safe mode. And once in safe mode, he was able to easily change the vote. He set up a fake vote, George Washington 1 and Napoleon Bonaparte 0. And he was able to easily change that vote from George Washington 1 to George Washington 0. And this is in the totals line. You don't have to do it individually. George Washington 1 to Napoleon 0. Easy, no problem. He changed it. Exactly flipped it. And by doing this in the user mode, there is no log that's created. It's like it completely wipes everything he did away. So trying to audit this as far as IT specials, impossible. He was able to go online, the cards that you insert when you go vote, there's three types. That's the voter card. Then you also have the poll worker card, and then you have the technician's card. He was able to go online and buy these cards. And he was able to buy a small piece of equipment all online, no questions asked, where he could change anything on these cards. He was able to insert them into this piece of equipment in front of everybody in the courtroom and show how easily it was for him to go in and become a super user. And when that happened, he could do anything he wanted, change it where it happened individually. You vote for John Doe, it went to James Smith. You won't need to know it.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Kristy Hayes. Come up and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My pleasure to once again address you on this issue. But it's time to eat humble pie and admit we made a mistake. It's time to man up, take responsibility for our actions. It's time to stop stalling, stop waiting on someone else to fix our problems. It comes a time in life to take our losses and move on. And I'm talking about these Dominion voting machines. We could probably plead ignorance in our past, but in 2019, I mean, because in 2019, we unwisely followed Raffensperger and thousands of dollars were purchased, were used to purchase these machines. We were gullible or we were trusting, but now we're finding out these do us no service. And it's stop, it's time to stop following Brad Raffensperger. He's been sued for his incompetence in running our elections. He has been running away from those who want to hold him accountable. He was a no-show both at the Georgia Senate hearings and at his most recent trial. Senate Bill 348 was recently introduced to remove him from state elections boards. And our Senator, Dr. Ben Watson, co-sponsored that. It's time to correct our error and get rid of our Dominion voting machines. They messed up multiple elections. In 2020, they were caught switching votes in Mesa County. In 2022, DeKalb County, they completely flipped the election results. In 2022, Maricopa, 20% of Dominion machines malfunctioned, messing up the elections. Over 20 computer experts agreed with this report, reaching the following conclusion. Our Georgia electric, election system, Dominion voting machines are the worst in the nation. Mr. Halderman, who just concluded in the Curling versus Raffensberg trial, to which Pam spoke on how he used the BIC pin to demonstrate the fallacy of these machines or the failability, excuse me, of these machines. And there are no limits to what can be done on this ballot data on this machine. One of the Dominion employers, Eric Kummer, testified under oath, quote, "Our equipment is riddled with bugs. Our products suck." So we're looking at the Lemon Law that was passed to protect consumers. Any defects that impair the use of, causes a safety hazard. Well, we feel that these Dominion machines have caused a lot of safety in our elections. And our county lawyer, he's a smart guy, we can find a way to apply the Lemon Laws to these Dominion machines and get some of our money back. But it's very important, we've got an important election coming up this year, and the good citizens of Bryan County don't want to be stuck with these Levens. These voting machines are defective and untrustworthy. And as you heard, there's many citizen residents here in the county that have no trust in them. And again, the paper ballots, they're doable, we've done them, France does them. You know, it can be done. It's what we used to do before we had all this electronic. So please consider our continued passion to get us to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next up is Claudia E., is, excuse me, sir, said, I couldn't read it. It looks like Claudia, what is, you should come up and state your name.
Claudia, sir. Claudia A.
Claudia who?
Claudia U.
Claudia U, okay, A. All right, great. We'll give you three minutes to talk.
Awesome, thank you. So I have this fantastic paper here presenting why paper ballots are far superior to electronic ballots. And I'm sure that nothing that's on here is new because you've heard it from everyone else. And I know that a little bit of effort went into this, but I have something that's actually a little bit more personal to me, and I think that it's going to resonate significantly more so than all the statistics that, that are going to try to woo you and tell you as to why paper ballots are superior to electronic voting machines. It's really simple. I moved to Georgia in 2017 because the Army decided to move me out here. I've loved living in Georgia ever since then. I plan on retiring out here. I absolutely love where I live. I love our location, I love our neighbors. I'm doing everything I can to basically embed myself like a tick to never, ever leave if possible. In 2019, my father passed away. My father never lived in Georgia. He lived in Los Angeles. He escaped from communism in the 1980s, fled to Germany. We were political refugees at one point, came to Germany and then came to America and lived in Los Angeles my, our entire lives until I left for the military. My father, again, never lived in Georgia. He passed away in 2019. I moved my mom as a widow out here to Georgia. She bought a property, she's a taxpayer, she loves it out here, same thing. Her only regret in life right now is that she hadn't moved earlier. In 2020, my father received instructions and a voter pamphlet at my mom's address. Let that sink in for a second. My father, who had never registered a driver's license, never had a bill associated with his name, never had anything to do with any kind of property in Georgia, received a voter registration packet with instructions on how to fill out that machine and how to vote for this upcoming election in 2020, a year after his death. So if you don't think that there is a problem, I am living proof telling you that, hey, listen, my family fled from communism, I have family members that were beaten, I have family members that were killed. My brother was killed when my father defected. So the threat of corrupting elections is not something that is a far-fetched idea. Like, there are people here who are living proof of what happens when these things go awry. And I am begging you to consider the consequences of what happens when you let somebody else take control over it because, as that famous phrase goes, if you give your kids to Caesar, don't be surprised when they come home a Roman. If we're giving our election to someone else, we can't be surprised when we don't like the outcome. So I'm just asking you to really consider that and go back to paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up is Tom Seaman.
Good evening, gentlemen. Professor M. Thomas Seaman here. My topic is elections. Whose responsibility? Obviously, we have a big problem. We've already said that 61% of Georgians don't trust our election process. That's huge. Here's the problem. Whose responsibility is it to fix it? The counties point the finger at SOS Raffensperger. Raffensperger points the finger at the counties. The state election board points the finger at the legislature. The state legislature points the finger back at Secretary of State Raffensperger. The lawyers are looking to the State Attorney General, Chris Carr. Chris Carr is looking to the courts and the judges to fix it. Nobody running Georgia's election system wants to take responsibility for this mess. So after three years of drama, we still have a broken election system here. So here's the big question of the day. Whose responsibility is it? I'd like to give four points. Number one, according to Georgia law, OCGA 21-2334, Georgia statutes give Bryan County authority over the conduct of its elections. The governor, the secretary of state, and the state election board have all admitted in court that yes, counties have that authority and therefore that responsibility to conduct lawful and secure elections. Well, as President Truman said, the buck stops here. No more excuses. Number two, in the recent court case just finished February 1st, Curling versus Raffensperger, in closing arguments, the Georgia Secretary of State placed responsibility directly with county election officials with the ultimate decisions, quote, "Regarding the lawfulness and the constitutionality of the ballots that they present to the electors in their jurisdiction." So Secretary of State Raffensperger said again, "It's up to us." Number three, OCGA 21-2-334 authorizes county election boards to use hand-marked, hand-counted paper ballots if needed to conduct a legal election. Quote, "If the use of voting machines wholly or in part is not practicable," unquote. So I think we have in part, there's a lot of reasons why we can say these machines are not practicable. And here's another quote, "If for any other reason," that's in the, that's in the statement too. Read that. 21-2-334. "If for any other reason, paper ballots shall be printed and can be used." It's in the code. We have the authority to do this, guys. Number four, OCGA 183-1-12-11 has an option for emergency paper ballots. Listen to this, quote, "Or if emergency ballots are otherwise needed as determined by the election supervisor." It gives the election supervisor authority to decide whether we need them or not. Okay? Next quote, "The determination of an emergency situation is, quote, 'at the discretion of the election's superintendent.'" Well, that's our employee. So again, it comes back to us, county, we have the authority. So summary, three things. Bryan County has the authority. Number two, Georgia's voting statutes authorize us to use paper ballots for any other reason. Number three, our election supervisor can provide paper ballots at her discretion. Let's fix our elections, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would anybody else like to speak? You're in our public comments section. If not, Commissioner comments. If not, we'll take a motion, go into executive session.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll comment here on something that's just kind of on my mind. The, for anyone who does not know, the correct pronunciation of Pembroke is Pembroke. And Broke, B-R-O-K-E. So just want to kind of remind everybody, because we can't seem to get that right about half the time. And it's been a little bit of a Facebook thing, I guess. Thank you.
Noted.
I know it's Pembroke. Anybody else?
I just want to echo Patrick's comments about the co-op project. Our public works team is phenomenal. They went down there and saved us millions of dollars on this project. Got it done much faster than we could have otherwise and made it where we're going to be able to get this project to fruition much, much quicker because of what they did.
That's right.
Thank y'all again.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close our public meeting into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation and real estate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now going to go into executive session.